Okay, call to order the regular city council meeting Monday, September 11th, 7:00 PM. Roll call.
Michelle Otto.
David Paradise.
Kirby Moyno.
Thomas Solars.
Jessica Bonnewell.
Michael Somerville.
Jared Vogie.
Dan Reamer.
Let us take a moment and pause on this, another celebration of 9/11. Remembering those who lost their lives that fatal day. Remembering those who worked so hard to save others. And remembering those left behind. God, we pray in thanksgiving that we are here tonight and are able to celebrate another 9/11, to remember those who served for others, to help others, to save others. We pray that you continue to work on this country, to continue to unify us. We thank you for our first responders that go and put their lives on their line every day. We thank you for this group of council people. And city workers that work tirelessly to bring about change and unity and well-being for all in this community. And we're thankful for this community. How you've placed us all together in this beautiful spot of the earth to make things better. To make life more harmonious, to love one another, and to care for the earth that you created and the water that is under us. Continue to guide and direct this group of people tonight as they make the world a better place in this place called Montrose. Bless the conversation and the intentions on their hearts. Amen.
Thanks Kathy. Before the pledge of allegiance, I know that Kathy just brought it up too, but in remembrance of 9/11, I'd also like to do a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second. Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0. Wright County Sheriff's Office.
Evening. Not much again to report this month, looking back at our numbers and just kind of what cases we had. Fortunately, August was pretty decent in terms of there's no habitual people offending or anything like that, so that's good. Through my past month of patrolling and through looking at the other deputies, the new ordinances regarding parking and such like and such haven't observed anything, so that seems to be going pretty well, unless there's one hidden somewhere where I haven't been trolled by. So yeah, new school year, obviously we have the middle school year, so it's not much of an issue with high school kids, but we'll deal with whatever the new year comes for juveniles. So if, I don't think there's anything else, if you have any questions, the only question I had looking at the agenda was, is there any specific thing or patrol you're going to request for your September 30th Fall Festival? Any concerns? I don't recall if you consigned for an off-duty for that.
Christie, did you get an off-duty for the Fall Festival? He was just asking.
Yeah. Okay, sure. Okay. So, cool. Any other questions?
One question I had is, you know, when you've been talking to people about some of the parking stuff, how have they been? How receptive have they been when you've just kind of talked to them about it?
Yeah, so when we got, when I got the email from our admin about you guys enacting that and it coming into effect, I looked around, especially when in like day one or day two or something like that, looking at, or sorry, right before that got enacted, I went around and like kind of memorized who was potential offenders are going to be. And then I, when it went into effect, I looked at, you know, went through all that and see what was up. And most of those trailers or whatever that may be were fixed basically right away. Some of them did the stop-get measure of getting up to their truck for a couple days and then from my experience right now, they even moved it from there. So it was kind of a gradual step. I talked to one person specifically, like the day after or two days after, and they were, she was very receptive to that, so no big deal. And that was just a, I'm never, yeah, so she was very receptive to that and she figured it out, no big deal. So I've not gotten any complaints like this is stupid or anything like that from any of the residents in Montrose, so so far, so good. It's a very reasonable ordinance every other city. Waverly has had one for a while, so not too many complaints from them, so. Yeah. I can't remember what the other one was, but it was another parking one. But I haven't, I haven't seen any offense for that either, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council?
I went to council meetings, Park and Rec, celebrate Montrose Days, budget meetings, and GOP meeting.
A couple of city council workshops, a budget meeting, fire department.
City Council, a couple workshops, the budget meeting that we had with the Personnel Committee, meeting with the City of Buffalo regarding the wastewater treatment plant, and LMC policy meeting. And the workshop with Waverly. Budget meeting, a couple of workshops, that's about it. Fire Department?
All I have is the activity report that's included in your packet, and I'll let you fill out the other. Unless there's any questions.
Mayor and Council, included in your packet for this evening is a letter of interest from current fire chief Triplet to be the fire chief for the 2024 year.
24 and 25.
24, 25.
Nobody else was interested?
That was the only letter of interest we received, yes.
I'll make a motion to reappoint Kevin Triplet as the fire chief from 1-1, 2024 through 12-31, 2025.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0.
I would say thanks.
Anything for the fire department? City Engineer?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. First item in your packets this evening is the result of a discussion held jointly between the Cities of Montrose and Waverly regarding the wastewater treatment facility improvements. At that discussion, there was consensus reached to take steps to move forward with the wastewater treatment improvement upgrades. There has been a resolution enclosed in your packet. Ultimately, the goal here is to get the plans and specifications submitted to the MPCA in March of next year so that the city can be best positioned for potential funding and grants associated with those improvements. Just by way of reference, we talked about this schedule previously, but ultimately, pending the funding or anticipating bidding starting in fall of 2025, so get in line for funding, apply for the PSEC grant in July, depending where the project ranks, may need to be a carryover project into 2025. So that's where we're at in terms of schedule, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, otherwise there's a resolution in your packet.
Do you believe we can make that deadline?
We will make that deadline.
Okay, I will make a motion to pass Resolution 2023-28, resolution ordering improvement and preparation of plans for wastewater treatment plant.
I will second.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Second item in your packet this evening is related to the 200 Crystal Lane drainage we discussed last, or at the last meeting. Council asked for some additional information in terms of cost. Two options were discussed. The first option essentially includes some sidewalk replacement and grading to prevent the existing water from the street from entering the property. That improvement option does require an easement and is more expensive than the second option, which is essentially the installation of a yard inlet with some additional drain tile when the properties were platted. Existing easements or easements exist out in the property, so easements won't be required. In terms of the options, option one, which includes the concrete replacement and grading improvements, as I mentioned, is the more expensive option at a estimated construction cost of 17,800, or 17,000, sorry, $855.
What was I going to say?
18 million?
I had, got new contacts and they're not working so good. And then the drain tile improvements, estimated construction cost of $8,900. So really, it's a discussion for council as we look at the potential solutions. Option one is clearly the solution that'll prevent the city's water being from the street entering the property. The other option allows it to continue to enter the property and collect it and dispose of it, so. Those are the two options, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
What would be the downside of doing the cheaper option of the drain tile?
Just council's comfort level of street water entering private property is really In terms of a long-term solution or?
As in like, is this something, if we go with drain tile, is this something 15 years from now we're going to have to revisit?
I think the property owner is familiar with the situation. I haven't spoke directly to him about the two options to gauge any of his opinion. Nonetheless, the permanent solution would be option one.
When would that section of sidewalk be getting replaced more than likely anyway? Would it be 10 years? Five years?
Well, considering the improvement was recently constructed, I forget the year, generally it would be in excess of 20 years.
Personally, I just, I hate putting Band-Aids on issues. You know?
I think if the drain tile is going to solve the problem and will take care of that issue for at least 15 years until we have to redo the sidewalk, I don't know. Because it wasn't installed more than five years ago, I want to say, 2018, 2017 maybe?
Yeah, I guess I'm not kind of with David on this one. I just don't want to throw a Band-Aid on it if the long-term solution is option one.
The issue is water from the street coming in. So again, the Band-Aid is putting the drain tile in to catch that rather than just fixing the actual cause, which is the sidewalk. And I think that better served to fix the sidewalk rather than potentially still have the storm drain, you know, drain tile and put in place, but have potential issues with it down the road.
There are a lot of other places in town where the water from the road is running into yards anyway, or driveways, or, you know. Daniel, what do you think?
I think option one's your best option. Chuck Smallwood will, I think he'd be happy with option one. I think for the city long-term, that's the way to go. If I were personally had that property and it kept running on there, I wouldn't want it to keep running on my property. Whether you install a drain tile in there or not, I don't want it running down my property. It does run down the sidewalk, which in the long run will probably make that sidewalk deteriorate faster. Want Band-Aid, I'd fix it right.
Any other discussion on that? Is there any motion one way or the other?
Bless you.
I'll make a motion to approve the concrete replacement and grading improvements with the current bid of 17,855 for 200 Crystal Lane drainage improvements.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Where is this coming? What part of the budget is this coming out of?
I'm sorry, I was talking to the engineer for a second.
That's okay.
When we propose it, there's also in the subtotal at the bottom, it also includes a 15% contingency cost. These are calculated with both options in play, but it would, it would need to include the contingency of 15%.
Yeah, the next step, we'll obtain quotes for it and bring it back to council. You'll have another opportunity to review those.
So this isn't a set price? So we're not approving the amount then? We would just be approving that that's the?
That's the option.
Okay, so that motion would probably have to be amended, but I, I mean, I'll, I'll ask the same question too. I mean, what area of the budget is this coming out of the 100,000 for streets?
This would come out of storm water. So storm art reflection system.
I will then amend the motion to just approve the concrete and replacement grading improvements for 200 Crystal Lane drainage improvement and getting quotes from the engineers.
I will second the amendment.
I'm also assuming, Jared, do you foresee this being done this year yet?
Highly unlikely.
So it would be coming out of next year's budget? In that area of the storm water repairs?
System repairs, storm water.
Further discussion? To go out and get bids for this improvement? Mr. Solars? I'll vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-0 to go out for bids.
The last item I had, excuse me, in the package here this evening is related to another discussion we had last month. As we know, MINDOT will be improving trunk highway 12 in 2025. The discussion that we had was regarding whether or not council wanted to pursue some cost estimates for lighting, and then we also discussed the replacement of the existing flasher system. So the first item with respect to the lighting, we've prepared an engineer's estimate incorporating the 25% cost participation from MINDOT, and we've identified a total estimated city cost associated with the lighting improvements to be 189,525. The ADA component or the replacement of the flasher system at Center Avenue, previously we discussed two locations, but Center Avenue was identified as the one that council is in favor of obtaining cost estimates for. We've estimated that cost at $44,000. So ultimately, the estimates are provided for your information and direction as to whether or not we should move forward with the lighting or the flasher or both. Ultimately, MINDOT needs that information included in their plan set, and they're asking the city what the intent is. So those are the estimated costs, and I'll pause and answer any questions that council might have.
Is this something that we would be putting on the CIP and?
The Highway 12, I don't remember what it's listed in CIP as, but yes, this is already on the tentative CIP.
Okay.
Under Highway 12, street improvements or landscape improvements, something like that, something to do with the look of it. I don't recall what the number we had planned for, but those are currently in flux, you know, ABDO is awaiting updated figures for anything that we wanted to postpone or adjust. So I would just, if council seeks to move forward with this, we would just adjust that number that was intended.
Honestly, that would be more than that. A little more than, you know, 133,000, 233,000, sorry. I figure we'd be looking at a lot more than that based on the cost of light, but. A hundred percent, I think the flashers is something that needs to happen. I don't think there's any question about that. As far as the rest of the lighting goes, thoughts on that?
Are these going to be the same similar lights that were put in throughout the rest of the town?
Sorry, what was that?
Are these going to be like similar lighting to what we did during, throughout the rest of the town?
Down Center Ave.
With construction?
Yes. That's what we base the estimates on.
I think it'd be a good look.
Brings it together, and it's not bad to have 25% buy-in from.
It's also pretty dark driving down most of Highway 12, so, especially at night. Do you need a motion on this, or is this just something that because it's on the CIP, we're going to continue to address it when we get there?
I think you can direct staff to move forward with electrical plans that council require, or that MINDOT requires to incorporate into their plan set.
Everyone's good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, Jared and staff, please move forward with looking at that, the lighting projects and the lighting project and the replacing the pedestrian flasher.
Then the only other thing I had this evening, update, 2023 street maintenance, street improvement project will start on Wednesday with removals. You probably noticed, may or may not have noticed, some pink paint in the project area identifying the concrete that needs to be removed. So they'll be in, last schedule they gave us was they're going to be in on Wednesday to start those removals, so you'll see a lot of activity. Staff also handed out notices to the residents so that they should be informed. Each resident got a hand-delivered flyer informing them of what's coming, so. Other than that, I have nothing further this evening unless council has questions.
Just regarding the street reconstruction, how many, how much more of the little checklist items we have left before it's finalized?
Yeah, they do have some punch list items. One of the ones that's been hanging out there a really long time is the bollard covers, so they're well aware of that. But I fully expect that to be wrapped up this fall. Get that project, final pay estimates submitted and closed out, start the warranty period, so.
Since we're on the topic of Highway 12, I had gotten an email today from our county commissioner, Mike Catchmark, reiterating that they're going to be doing this project in 2025, MINDOT will be, and that they'll be extending the double turn lane all the way down to Zephyr. However, I know in the past, we've had conversations about trying to do something else at that intersection. MINDOT has been very resistant in the past. Mr. Catchmark offered the number for the MINDOT person who's in our area, who lives in Baxter, so that covers Montrose. I'm just wondering if everybody would think it's worth it to try to pursue something else at that intersection, whether it be some sort of light or roundabout or anything like that? It would be a cost to the city, but if that's just something we'd like to try to pursue when they come into town in a couple of years?
I think there's, there's issues both at Zephyr and at Arizona right there. I think traffic gets backed up, people trying to get in or out, so, I mean, it wouldn't be bad to have a discussion.
MINDOT has basically said in the past that there's not enough accidents for them to really care about that, and that it's, that's a very harsh way of saying it, but as well as it's too close to the stoplight to do any kind of, you know, traffic light or, yeah, some. light or, yeah, some sort of control. But if we thought it was worth hashing out, I mean, we can, we can try to work on that, but otherwise they're putting in the, the double turn lane or the suicide lane, as a lot of people call it. Just food for thought.
I mean, it'd be nice to have a legal bypass lane. If anything.
For sure.
Since everybody uses it as a bypass anyways, I think we saw about fifteen of those today, Kevin?
Well, apparently we need more accidents there. And, and the double turn lane will help with that, but it'll just move the problem to the center of the road instead of the middle of the road, or the middle of the lane, I guess, so. Since we were talking about highway twelve, I figured I'd bring it up. Uh, Park and Rec.
Happy I got my phone back. Good evening, Mayor, Council, say staff. Been a busy month, have quite a couple of things. We are on schedule to have the park and trail plan wrapped up for October. Waiting on the finalized version for us to approve at our next meeting. It has some requests here. We are looking for permission to close Second Street on September thirtieth from approximately the pad of the fire station, where the fire station doors are, to Center Street for the festival. I know that's been gone over with by, with Kevin a little bit. Also gonna be walking it again shortly. I don't know if we need motion on that or not, but.
As long as the fire department's okay with it and doesn't see any issue, then I'll make a motion to allow Park and Rec to close down Second Street for the Fall Festival on September thirtieth.
I'll second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Ms. Otto?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you. Second item we had is we are requesting a special meeting, actually scheduled for nine twelve, to go to several parks, mark out where six benches will be installed from the Lions. Also during that meeting, we're gonna walk the grounds for that festival to give everybody an idea on where everything's gonna lay out the day of.
We already approved that in our consent agenda.
All right. Uh, third item I have is approval for payment for the band for the festival. We've already confirmed it's within budget, but I wanted to get approval from council to spend that money.
Already been approved on the consent agenda.
Okay. And the last item I have is we had spoken last day is it, last Tuesday at our Park and Rec meeting, and we were going to request an increase in Park and Rec budget to the previous amount of the previous committee, which I believe was eight thousand.
Toby, are you talking about for recreational programming? That's a line item?
Yep.
Have we figured out yet how that's gonna work, the recreational programming?
As discussed in the budget workshop, we've been instructed or given further direction from the city attorney that the city should not be funding, donating, or spending any public funds on events. Historically, events that have been either subsidized or put on by the city have come out of the recreational programming budget. The recreational programming budget is for authorized expenditures through the state legislature and state auditor described as any programming that meets the general public use is used by the entirety of the public or specific programming for youth and seniors. Or a few caveats where they carve out specific types of not really events, but engagement activities between law enforcement and the public, i.e. National Night Out. Or a handful of other small carve-outs. Whether or not the budget were to go up, that, that's not what I'm arguing, but the purpose of recreational programming budget, which is the line item you're speaking about, is for recreational programming. So what we were seeking is Park and Recreation to come up with some recreational programming ideas. Other things that come out of that budget currently are the school open gym in the winter, and I was talking with council member Otto just last week. There were some previous activities that were put on through community ed and the county that it sounds like they ceased around COVID and have not kicked back in, but we could potentially be part of that movement to push those back into occurring. Programming for kids during, during the day through the summer and, you know, even evening or any of that.
Yeah, I guess overall, the committee's request is just to put things back the way they were before COVID or before the last committee, as far as budget-wise.
I, I don't personally see an issue with it. I think that it would be good to get some of those other activities backed. Sounds like you may have been referring to Spark as far as a middle-of-the-day program.
Called pop-up parks now?
It'll always be Spark.
I know, right? Yeah.
Just like Hardee's will always have ball pits. I think it'd be good to get some of those things to try to get funding, move towards them, and try to get them going again. Hopefully, people would be willing to let their kids go to the park in the middle of the day for a couple hours. As well as maybe some other recreational programming that the Park and Rec Committee can come up with to satisfy the state legislature.
So it was community ed that did the Spark program?
Yeah.
The park thing? I will probably have a meeting coming up with them in October. And see what their, because they still do do it in Buffalo. It's just the interest was down here. And then I did talk with some members of Grace Place and the FEED program to maybe put out a little thing if there's something that seniors want to be involved in, kind of get a little feedback on that. So.
Okay.
Hopefully, something.
And just a little guidance on what, you know, the budget as of this year, the four thousand dollar budget, of, of what's been spent out of that budget or is proposed to be spent. Most of it was related to this summer event. The recreational program portion of it, which would have been the, what we spent on last season's open gym was under four hundred dollars of that four thousand dollars. Historically, more hours have been scheduled for it, and it has been higher in the past. I think the previous year was still under eight hundred dollars. So just looking at how much of the current programming, how much room you'd have to work with to find programming options and spend, one of the other items that's gonna be coming up in tonight's discussion is a possible donation to the Delano Senior Center. So that, that would be part of the, likely would be attributed to, if we went with it, to senior programming. But just to give you an idea of, of the four thousand dollars, really, I mean, just a drop in the bucket has been for programming. So we're looking solely at programming.
Yeah, it's.
Where it's at, there's a lot of flexibility there.
In all fairness, when we came into it, we were told to have multiple events throughout the year, which now we're finding out are not allowed under legislature. So.
It's been a step-by-step process of finding out what we.
We've been working through it, so.
If we were to add another four thousand dollars, where is that gonna come from with the way that we did the budget last week?
To, I mean, right now, what's in our packet later on here is what we'd be approving is levying for that amount. So either we could rerun these numbers, but as far as the preliminary goes, then we would have to have, have that data. I mean, I, I suppose we could, when we make a motion when it comes to the budget, we could just.
The total amount is changing.
Up, up the total by four thousand dollars.
Otherwise, take it from somewhere else.
Or find somewhere to move it from.
Or when those final budget adjustments are coming, if we intend on moving anything anywhere, as long as we don't go over with our final budget, the number that's already on here, the where it goes can adjust.
Is it too much to ask of finding out what other programs we did in the past with Park and Rec and get a number of what that cost would be before we decide to just dump another four thousand dollars into the budget?
Certainly.
Well, and maybe it's not even adding to the budget. It could be just moving it from somewhere else, but I think some of that could be if we approve the levy the way it is now, or to, to potentially levy for that amount. We don't need to increase it, we could just look at where it could be moved from, whether it's from park buildings or.
Just going, but going by what Michael said, it doesn't sound like we would be going over the budget of four thousand dollars with the programming pieces and.
Yeah, it's right around sixty-five dollars.
Therefore, give them some opportunity to maybe do some, some like extra research on what other programmings are out there that they might want to add. I'm rather do that than just say, here's, we're gonna move the four thousand here over here and then not be able to use it, you know, or just without doing our homework on it.
Yeah, I mean, we're not finalizing today, so. I don't think it's something to approve whether or not today, but to have the conversation, and we're gonna have a couple more budget meetings at some point anyway.
Even previously on Park and Rec, I don't think we really ever went over four thousand dollars. And that was with Spark Program, Open Gym, Summer Splash, Easter Raid. We did three events back then. What was it there?
Breakfast with Santa or something?
We do crafts, they did crafts. Mm-hmm.
For a while, they did the senior card night.
Mm-hmm, we could ask Ryan Sylvia again. Or not. But I think it's up for a discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just more of a lateral so that we don't feel restricted in the future. It's not necessarily just like, just like when we asked for funding for porta-potties, I didn't go and say we need seven. Went, we went lower because we don't want to overspend either. That's all I have, though. Any questions?
I, I do have a question. So you, you talked about Carver Field in here, so it's not noted, and maybe you guys had the discussion, but if we're gonna put all of the work into it, I do know from personal experience that almost all of the surrounding youth associations require the teams that use it to put in some sort of time after their games are done to some sort of maintenance, whether it's putting the bases away, putting plugs in, dragging it, raking it. I know that, you know, from my experience coaching Howard Lake, we have to do all of that and drag it and lock everything up when we're done. So is that something that was perhaps talked about or something that we can look at and have that conversation with community ed too about, hey, if the teams are using it, we just need them to make sure that they take care of it and not just, you know, no leaving the bases out and not raking around?
Yeah, it was, it was talked about briefly. Obviously, we have to figure out which way we're gonna go with the field. I would like to model it, and I mean, I think it's the smart way to, is to go the same way I've seen it run at other associations, where the people that are using the field are responsible for taking care of the field. It should be part of when they sign on to use it, this is what you are required to do. Because obviously, we don't want to spend the money, and then five years from now, we're back to where we were. There's also, in, in the estimates I've seen, there is changes to the field as far as grading and stuff like that, extension of infield. We are still reviewing the fence because not all of it is necessary upfront. I mean, if, it'd be great if we had all the money to just replace everything, but you may have to do it in stages. But as far as you're asking about maintenance, yeah, it would be a requirement. If you want to use the field that we just put a bunch of money into, you're gonna have to do some work.
And I mean, I think, I think it's good for the, the kids to learn that as well, too. I mean, they, they should learn how to do that with it when they're done with it. That that's what you do, so they're gonna be expected to do the same thing when they're in high school and they're playing sports at that level.
The only, the only thing that we may need direction on as far as closing it down for the year and opening it up for the year, we may need to figure that out. Otherwise, as far as during the season, or when it's in use, it should be maintained. Otherwise, you don't have to use it. I mean, I'd prefer everybody use it. But if they can't follow the rules, I mean, I don't want them racking it either, so.
Yeah, I mean, and I'm not really referring to, you know, a dad and his kids going out there and using it and, you know, having to drag it afterwards, but, you know, like when teams go out there and I'm sure you know, we take care of it beforehand, or if someone around takes care of it before there are games out there. Just that the teams that use it, you know, that they, you know, pick up afterwards.
Yeah, no, totally agreed upon. That's what you're required.
So are you talking about just picking up the bases or raking it, or?
I, I would say that could be up for discussion amongst Park and Rec really, because it, it varies. Even within, you know, like in the Howard Lake Association, there are some fields that they're like, nope, don't, don't drag it, don't do any of that. Pick the bases up, put the plugs in, and, and rake in the holes, and that's all they want you to do. Other places, you're responsible for literally dragging it and doing all of that when you're done.
I mean, if you get, if you get five, six-year-olds out there, you're not gonna have to do a lot of maintenance because they're not digging into the ground. You get full-grown adults out there, yeah, it's gonna take more maintenance.
So would we have the equipment then for them to do that?
I, I wouldn't see why not. I mean, we could, but if you put like a combination lock on there, and the community ed is only able to give it to whoever the head coach of the team is, and it's just, hey, take the bags out, put them in the shed, put the plugs in, and rake around home plate. I mean, that's pretty simple, and it takes five minutes to do. And it goes a long way with not leaving the bases out, getting worn out. It'd be nice to see you put a safety bag in there at first base, too.
Yeah, that's definitely needed.
So, like I said, I have a meeting with community ed, I believe it's in October. Do you want me to bring something up, or do you want to have this more discussion at Park and Rec before it gets brought up? Because their meetings are only quarterly.
Yeah, we do probably need more discussion with Park and Rec, plus we have not formally put out anything as far as, I mean, we have some estimates, obviously we'll have to have some more before we spend the money.
Yeah, and I'm sure that they probably deal with it with the fields in Buffalo. I, I mean, I don't, I've never coached in Buffalo, but I know that the other three surrounding towns all require it, so.
Yeah.
I would assume Buffalo does.
Fields in Buffalo.
We didn't when we played, when Jim coached, but that was twenty years ago, who knows?
Well, when I coached, when I coached there last year, yeah, it was, it was required, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Fields and Buffalo require volunteer hours as well through their baseball association, which include spring cleanup and fall turn-down, which is an option.
That's the association, though, is that community ed?
No, it's association.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
But they do require coaches to, after the game is over, they pull the fake mound out.
Oh, those things are brutal.
Well, this, that, that, last year was the last year for us, so.
If they're the big ones, those things take four or five adults to carry. That's all I had for you, though. I don't know if anybody else has any questions?
Dan, it was brought up with the tournament over the weekend. Dan, it was brought up with the tournament over the weekend, if the lights work. Do we know? I know. They, I mean, they did.
Half of them, probably.
There's some bulbs that are out. Honestly, I can't find no paperwork on who they get to even replace those. So I'll have to look into that, but there's some lighting out up there. All the poles work. There's just singular lights out on different poles.
That's what I thought, okay.
Since you did mention that, if we do, if we do change the field size, lighting is going to have to change in order to use it at night.
I think we just, like you said, needed to put bulbs in there because they were working.
You're talking about extending the fences?
If you change the field size.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
All the lighting.
No, I'm assuming this is not going to be cheap.
Nothing is, Dan.
Nope.
Nothing's cheap.
But as far as this year goes, next spring, we'll look into getting those replaced.
Bulbs?
Well, yeah, it could be ballast, too. Who knows? I mean, that's, that's some old-school lighting there. I did test them before the tournament last, this weekend, and when I flipped the breakers on that building, it sounded like that board was going to hum off the wall.
Yep.
Those things are sucking some power. Eventually, you probably want to think about upgrading to LEDs out there, but something would have to go into a plan.
Thank you.
And then as far as maintenance, we do not have a piece of equipment to pull the drag at the field.
I would suggest getting a different one that's not from the 1960s.
Well, that isn't a drag.
But if you get a, if you get one of the lighter ones, they do a really nice job and, I mean, you know, you've seen the ones that we use in Howard Lake, but we don't need the bigger, heavy ones. But I mean, a simple lawnmower can pull some of the lighter ones.
Right, so we're not pulling, we're not going to store a $30,000 lawnmower up there for a drag of fifth.
And maybe we don't require them to drag it, but, you know, like I said, a minimum of put the bases away and maybe on, you know, Tuesday and Thursday each week if there's Little League out there.
Yeah, we could leave a rake, a field rake up there and, you know, possibly get a drag that they could pull by hand. A broom drag, I think, is what you're talking about.
Yeah. Maybe we can even recruit an older retired gentleman who lives in the area and loves sports to go out there and do some of that.
Yeah, you never know. You might find a decent lawnmower cleanup day next spring. Who knows?
Thanks, Toby.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The exciting part now, Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Packet on page 55 and 57, there are some bids in to get some stormwater catch basins fixed before the winter months here. Bid one, as you can see on the map on the backside on page 56, is out in Pheasant Hills, was brought to our attention. There's a hole creating in the road out there. We had Keakley come in and give us an estimate, and I just need your approval to go ahead. The money's in those two funds to get this done this year. And then the second estimate is for the catch basins that was brought to our attention by the county. Called me and said that they would like to see those fixed before the snow flies. I had a little debate with them and who's responsible for that. They told me it's us, so I'm assuming it's us. It's our storm sewer, their road, our storm sewer. We repair it. Just some sink holes and Keakley said they could get this done. This, these are the quotes they sent me. I thought they'd be a little bit more in-depth, but looking to get your approval on bid one for the Pheasant Hills and bid two for the County Road 12. Storm water repairs and street, obviously, there's going to be some street repairs involved in this when they dig it up, so. So we can get this going and get this done.
Now, it says here interior lining of catch basin is not included?
Correct. We'd have to eventually, which we'll probably look at next spring, getting them lined ourselves, getting them spray lined. Keakley does not do that. We do, we've had spray lining done for us in the past with a company out of Cucato that we use a lot that does this for us, so. We probably would not get that done this year because of the weather. We don't want to spray line when it's cold out, so.
What, is this coming out of streets then?
Coming out of street fund and stormwater fund, as you can see below the bid. How I want to split it up.
Want to verbalize, that's all.
The money's in there. We have the money to do it.
Deb, you like the work that Keakley's done with us so far, last year or two?
Yeah. Yeah, Keakley and they responded fairly quickly in getting these quotes done. It was brought to my attention about those storm sewer ones by the county, kind of in the middle of last week, and they got these to me, and the beginning of last week, they got these to me within two days. Now, there's a certain dollar amount where I got to get multiple quotes, but the more quotes I get, the longer it takes, the longer it takes. The longer we're pushing in toward October, November here. At minimum, I guess, I would like you to see for sure approve the County Road 12 one. Means the county's asking us to get it done. The other one in Pheasant Hills, we can patch it, but I don't know what's going underneath the road there. There was a hole created in the road and looking into it, I don't know how far it's hollow. I would not like to see a car just drive into a hole one day, but that can wait. We could fill it with stuff we have.
Is this the one that was developing kind of like the other hole out in that neighborhood?
Yeah, it's, they'd be in this, unlike their quote is wrong, it's in the southwest corner of that intersection out there. The intersection of Quail Drive and Pheasant Ridge Drive.
Yeah, and down in there, it looks like it's all cracked and, yeah.
And who knows? I mean, let's hope that this covers what they plan on fixing. Like, we don't know what's going to happen once we dig into it. But they both need to be done, no doubt.
Yeah, the one is bad. I mean, I'd, I'd seen that one. It's, it was going to end up like the other one, so.
Yeah.
Or if a plow went over it.
Correct.
So we're fine just approving these amounts then? Yeah, okay. I'll make a motion to approve Keakley Underground to excavate and repair a catch basin and replace the bituminous and concrete work on the southwest corner of Quail Drive and Pheasant Ridge Drive for a total of $29,475.
I will second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mizotto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion passes four zero.
What about the other one? I'd make a motion to approve bid number two for catch basins on County Road 12 for the sum of $33,360.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mizotto?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. I was just waiting for somebody else to jump in on the second one.
You're doing a great job. Just keep rolling with it.
Mayor, Council, that's all I have. If you have any other questions for Public Works, feel free to ask them.
Did you get them double stop signs taken care of?
What's that?
The double stop signs, you get that taken care of? No?
Yeah, I mean, I wanted to leave them up. That way, they'd actually stop. Yeah, we're doing some pole replacement, the breakaways, and the guys didn't get to the removals, and I couldn't leave a sign up in front of another sign, so they had to put the sign up. Yeah, they were working on it today.
Thanks, Danny.
Thank you.
Old business. Go ahead, I guess.
Mayor and Council, included in the packet tonight is Resolution 2023-29. This is just to authorize staff to execute the petition and waiver agreements for the Pheasant Hills Drainage Improvement Project that is being paid for by the residents. We are getting close, so hopefully no more issues and we'll be able to get these agreements signed and everything going with that project for them.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-29 authorizing execution of petition and waiver agreements by and between the city of Matros and property owners for Pheasant Hills Drainage Projects Improvements. Sorry.
I will second.
Further discussion? I'll vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mizotto?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Rolling Meadows Regional Park fence quotes.
Mayor, Council, you told me last council meeting to get some bids on replacing this fence out at Rolling Meadows Regional Park. And I was able to get three of them in before this council meeting, and they are on page 61. And obviously, you could tell they range. So I guess it's whatever way you guys decide you want to handle this.
There's no possibility of just replacing whatever sections or boards that are bad and then staining it all?
There's always a possibility of that. Whatever you tell us to do is what we do.
You went out there and looked at it, correct, Danny?
Yep.
How many boards do you, I mean, what?
I'd redo the whole thing.
Redo the whole thing?
Yeah, I would look, I mean, you can't stain new and then stain old and think it's not going to look weird. You'd have to replace every lateral out there. I'm talking lateral board, not the ones that they attach to. Yeah. I did not get a quote on that.
No worries.
So.
Do you want approval for this tonight or is this something that we can send to have Park and Rec look at what would fit with what they're planning out there? I don't know if black chain link is going to fit with their plans for, you know, flowers and grass out there or if, you know, white or a black privacy fence is what they would? I'm just curious.
It's completely up to you. The one thing, talking to all fence companies, if you do do chain link, it can be repurposed. So let's say 20 years from now, you want to rip it out, you can put it in somewhere else. The vinyl privacy, probably not. That's food for thought. I'm not solely sure on if you want to private or if you want to chain link, I just, while they were here, that's what I got quoted. If you want to have us replace the laterals and stain it, I mean, it's going to cost money and obviously man time and hours. Every situation here is going to cost you money. It's, and you will be probably doing that more often with a wood fence than you think, but if you want the park board, I mean, that's, I mean, obviously, we can all tell by the quotes, that's quite a bit of money there. It's not cheap. It's a lot of linear feet.
So with doing this fence, possibly redoing this fence, is that going to fix the whole erosion and draining and?
And that's up to determine, I, I'm not admitting that there's erosion or drainage problems because I'm not an engineer. I don't do grading.
Because back in November of 2021, it was approved to fix all of that and get-
They did, they did.
No, they didn't. No, they did not.
And that's, that's your guys', I don't know, you're going to have to have the engineers go out there. I don't do erosion control. It's not part of my job.
Yeah, and the seating, the dormant seating for winter and the stapling of the blanket, none of that got done.
What would you like us to do? As far as Public Works goes?
It's hard to, I mean, it's going to be hard to determine that because, I mean, just replacing a fence, we have to, as you guys have said multiple times, you have to fix the problem. And the problem-
We've been trying to fix this problem for 10 years. I mean,
No, you didn't because-
At what point do we just say, okay, this is where we're at? I mean, every, every single step here has been another Band-Aid, you know, and it's like every, every year, another problem pops up or they're not happy with X fix that we did last year.
But you didn't do the fix. You didn't do the fix in 2021. You guys made the motion to do the fix, but the fix never went out there. You made another motion in November to approve the seating that never got done. So, and that, that's not on, that's on over there.
You paid for seating to get done, so that's-
Seating got done.
It got done a different way.
Yeah.
We weren't contacted about it. And the grass up next to the fence, the cocoa hill or whatever, was talked about from the city engineer. That was never done. The grass on your side, there's no rest there. So that's why my side is eroding because your side is empty.
If, if we were to redo all of it out there and go right back to the beginning and redo all of it, I think that engineers would need to have permission to go on to private property because based on some of the previous comments, there is drainage that directly goes down into the Rolling Meadows Regional Park. And there's been comments from, you know, whoever it was a couple of years ago, I don't know if it was a landscaper or whatever, that that could be potential, that that is causing some of the stuff. You know, we're, we're going to have to get, I, no offense, this isn't, I'm not slighting you here, but we'll have to get permission from Jim because he's the only name listed on this fence permit for permission to tear it down and replace it with whatever is decided. On here, it says wood. So I guess that's, the fence is the first part of the conversation, but if the fence gets replaced, do we, do we start from complete scratch and have it all reevaluated by the team of engineers and have it all completely done on the city side, I guess, because we can't do that on the private property?
Well, the big thing is, is you could put up a new fence. They're saying their yard's eroding away. Does, what, new fence or not, that's what they're saying. So.
We just want grass on your side. We just want grass up to the fence on your side. It was on top right up there.
Well, when we, when we do fences on city property, we spray them. Or we whip them. That's what we do.
But it, in 2019.
Yeah, we did it.
It was sprayed with something.
Yeah, we do a kill-all, the same stuff we use on the ball field, same stuff. Obviously it worked really well out there. We use this out at the wastewater plant. We use it on areas. We don't want to weed whip every single time. And at six hundred and six.
This is because of the elevation that you guys put in, so.
I guess if you want a true fix, you put a retaining wall around that whole thing out there and you level her yard out. That's the true fix. Because it doesn't matter, there's elevation change through her whole property line. It all slopes downhill all the way around it. Do you agree? It all goes down. There's like maybe a little flat spot up by Conner Road twelve, but other than that.
There it is. But the only elevation I want fixed is the back fence because we already know.
What do you mean by that? The north or, or the west?
West.
West.
And now there's a retaining wall there that you guys put up for eighteen thousand dollars. You're going to rip that out? See, it's, it's a never-ending, it's never-ending. So I suggest you don't put up a forty thousand dollar fence until she's happy with what the city provides as far as elevation. That's what I suggest.
There's a twenty foot section, or it's probably a little bit bigger than that, that goes down when you get to the back, so you can't always do it if you push forward. That's what I would like fixed.
And.
And for it to stop.
And if the. And I highly suggest you put it all on city property next time. Entire fence. Not on the property line, on the entire city property, so we can mow on both sides of the fence. And maintain both sides of the fence without asking permission to go on property.
If you do that, would it butt up to that retaining wall?
Right, the retaining wall will have to be adjusted. Again, this is probably something the engineers are going to have to look at to the point where the property owner and the city is happy with what's going on. Because it seems to be never-ending.
I mean, we're probably what, thirty, forty thousand into this already?
Plus the original cost of the original fence out there. And we all know that park ain't getting developed.
Right.
We all know that. So. I don't, I don't have the cure-all answer. It seems like we fix one thing and it's something else. We fix another thing and it's something else.
Rough, rough estimate, and I think I had asked this a couple of years ago, what would be the cost of extending the retaining wall to the end of the fence?
You'd have to do it around the whole thing.
Well, we're just talking on the west side.
I don't know. I have no idea.
How big is it over there now? How many feet do you think?
I wasn't part of those original costs. I don't know. That was weighing.
Well, it was eighteen thousand for that.
Yeah, but that's not even tall enough. You'd have to use, you'd have to use something like, that's on the side of Buffalo Lake there on Conner Road twelve. You know, giant retaining wall blocks.
Lord.
Huh?
That's huge.
Well, that's the only way to keep that property in there. Those little blocks are going to last ten, fifteen, twenty years. It, all it would have to be revisited. So I don't know. I think it's something where the city and the engineers and the homeowners need to meet and sit down and come with a final cure-all answer so we can put this thing to rest. Seems like it's non-stop. It's always something.
All right. Did you have something?
I was just going to say that we should direct Jared to set up a meeting between both parties and I don't know if part of this, we need to have a contractual agreement with lawyers involved to, when it's all said and done, say that this is it. We're both signing on the dotted line. Here's everyone's signatures. And everyone agrees this is the best solution and this is what we're doing and neither party could come back later on. If the city didn't like whatever the solution was ten years from now, can't go and change it.
I think that's a very wise idea.
I'm going to say something here. You seem to be under the impression that we're causing you worry. We didn't move John Lane. We didn't slow.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. I'm just saying that.
The fence was brought to the attention of the city numerous years ago. They put it in, they were going to let it dry and seal it the next year. I can't find the council meeting, but it was brought up at July, or I'm sorry, August of twenty nineteen about sealing it, and it was never sealed because the Public Works Department Director decided no. And so it wasn't us asking you to do it. It says, there was a letter written here written by an attorney saying that you were to take care of it every five years. This is your guys' maintenance problem. It's not, it's not us that are making our yard.
I'm. If, if you misinterpreted what I said as saying that you're going out there and causing this problem, that's not what I meant.
Don't ask us to sign an agreement that we're not going to come after you if other things from what you guys did on your side.
That's why, that's why this solution would be an end-all, be-all. Everybody would be involved and it would say, this a hundred percent is going to take care of the issue and this is what we agreed to and thirty years from now, you know, nobody's going to come back and say, well, if it's a retaining wall, the city's not going to go, well, we're just going to tear it down. We don't like the way it looks anymore. Or the solution wasn't good enough. It just, there needs to be a point regardless of anyone's feelings towards anything of this is what our final agreement is between both parties and say, yes, we're taking care of the problem and this is what it's going to be.
But the city caused the problem. Aren't you the one that said that you can do whatever you want on your side of your line? But if you can affect somebody else's property, there's an issue?
I, I don't think that I'm arguing with you about that at all. I, I'm saying that, yes, let's look into solving the problem.
Your fix at this time is going to be a fix that stops everything. In 2021, it was said to fix the erosion. What did you put in, grass being planted? That would be, we wouldn't sign off on that.
And that's why I said that we should come up with a solution that everyone signs off on. Jared, can you please try to reach out and set up some sort of meeting? And then we will go from there.
Will do. Thank you.
Creekside Hollow.
Mayor and council, included in your packet for this evening is a request for a one-year extension on their preliminary plat for Creekside Hollow.
I think their reasons make sense.
They did detail some reasons for why they would like this request to continue.
I don't necessarily think the problems will be solved in a year, but.
We'll see.
I don't see an issue. We don't have any other people that are vying for the Creekside Hollow area, do we? I'll make a motion to approve their request for a one-year extension on their preliminary plat approval.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Uh, new business.
Good evening, mayor and council. In front of you, we have the preliminary budget and levy proposal as discussed at the budget workshop. We're looking at a potential, an estimated net tax capacity with of three point seven nine million. A three point two percent rise. What is proposed would be a levy of one million eight hundred forty-two thousand four thirty-one, which is an approximate four point five percent increase or seventy-nine thousand five seventy-four over twenty twenty-three. There's an additional page that I handed out and included on the table that was, that I forgot to include in the packet that outlines estimated or property values with what the estimated tax amount would be at the new rate versus the forty-seven eighty-nine in the twenty twenty-three tax year. So it would increase by less than one percent. With a three hundred thousand dollar home seeing an increase in city taxes of under nineteen dollars. Items that were included in expanding this budget, what accounts for some of the increase would be discussed improvements to Carver Field and some of the early stages of the proposed capital improvement plan, including replacing, getting all the vehicles and equipment for Public Works on a replacement schedule. So if you have any additional questions.
Assuming the county has not gotten back to you on the.
I have not gotten an updated tax capacity.
Tax capacity.
And one more thing, so and also, we, we say it every year, but this is a preliminary budget. This is the high end of what we would be looking for and then from here, the budget can either maintain at this one point eight million levy or go down. I know it was discussed earlier tonight. There was talk of a portion of this budget would be for that Carver Field improvement, so it sounds like some of that may be phased or postponed. So they're, they're in discussion, some of that sliding around that could happen, could come from those proposed funds or potentially even cutting some of those out if it's going to be a phased project and we're going to be adding it to the CIP maybe, you know, in future years, so. There's already things within sight to cut.
Whittle down.
Or, or adjust.
Okay. Any questions on the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget and levy? I will make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four preliminary budget and levy.
I will second.
Further discussion? We can always change what some of the stuff may be going to, correct?
Yes.
I just want to make sure that if we decide some of the Carver Field stuff's not going to happen, then we move it to, you know, another additional staff or, or whatever it be, so.
All of that can be flexible up until that final budget meeting.
Other discussion? Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
I, I didn't want to step on your motion. I just wanted to comment that also I've been talking to a representative from ABDO as far as the CIP goes. I know in that, in our last capital improvement plan meeting, we had discussed having a November first deadline for adjustments for this, that we would get it into them so that they can make their adjustments before our December meeting. I would like to accelerate that and, you know, some, some of the items that we've already discussed tonight, but then any additional comments or direction that council has as far as what we discussed in that CIP meeting or since, any, any ideas or movements in that CIP to be done by the last week in September so that I can get those to ABDO so they can have something to act on sooner in relation to one of the other items coming up in the agenda.
Are they, are they saying that it'll take them longer to get some of that stuff ready? I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, not that it would take them longer, but to, to make sure that I can get those changes made with them.
Before he leaves.
Before.
Somebody's.
Yes, I know that that is coming up. I just, I, I'm thinking ahead that, you know, between the four of us, that on another eventual item we talk about, a fifth person who sits up here may have some sort of other idea that we're not thinking of. So that's, I was, that's why I was just asking that. Would that be the final final, or is there a possibility that?
What we would submit to them so that they can start running the numbers and part of what they wanted to work out was there were ebbs and flows in that plan where some years were getting hit harder than others. And they were going to try to adjust some of those to get us a more level what we would budget for CIP annually. So that one year we're not doubling what we, you know, what we would need for our five-year or ten-year plan. So they, they just need about a month to go from our final adjustments to getting something in front of council.
Okay. Is everybody okay with the end of September? So.
I can, in this week, I can send out something to all council members, but it'll reply all, that will just summarize at least the takeaways I got after that workshop.
Just BCC.
Between that workshop and then any individual comments or, or even ideas that we've had, just summarize those and we could go from there.
Thanks, Michael. Resolutions?
The next two resolutions are simply decreasing the, we have to precisely levy for what is needed for the bonds this year and the requirement is lower for these two bonds than was outlined at the inception. They're bonded at a hundred and five percent and as to prepare for contingencies and we're on track.
Routine maintenance every year.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-30, authorizing a decrease of the levy for street construction bond twenty seventeen A.
Further discussion? All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-31, Resolution authorizing a decrease to levy for street reconstruction bond twenty twenty-one A.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Aye, Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. I almost forgot your name.
Thanks. Appreciate you.
Uh, city council vacancy.
Mayor and council, included in the packet tonight is Resolution 2023-32, declaring the city council vacancy left empty by Nicole Andreev. She gave her resignation as of August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, and we just need to declare the vacancy and then we can discuss what to do next.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-32, Resolution declaring a city council vacancy.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Motion carries four zero. So here's my thought that I had proposed to Jess was we open applications for the council seat starting tomorrow morning. They already have a. They already have a um, template for what we've used too many times in recent years, um, in my opinion. And we leave that open from the twelfth through the twenty-eighth, which would be the last full day until four-thirty in the office, uh, 'cause the twenty-ninth is a Friday, so they're done at eleven. And then do interviews on October second uh, at City Hall because the community center is occupied. And then make our decision that night, and then they take their oath of office on the ninth. So we really only run into one meeting without somebody um, in that seat being this meeting.
I like it. Sounds good.
Works for me.
And that meeting would be at five o'clock at City Hall on the second. And then we would probably do like what we did uh, the, the last time where it's thirty-minute blocks, and, yeah.
I get to be on the other end this time.
He said he gets to be on the other end this time.
Do we do a meeting at five-thirty instead of five? Does that work?
Go to that if you guys are.
Yeah, that's fine. Just have to change it to five-thirty instead of five.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't think I have anything, nothing that would matter.
No, it doesn't matter.
If you're gonna be here at five, what's the difference of five-thirty? Yeah, yeah, that's right. I'll just, I'll just leave at one o'clock instead of twelve-thirty. Okay. Resignation of Mr. Michael Sommerfeld.
Mayor and council, unfortunately, uh, we have received resignation notice from Mr. Michael Sommerfeld. There was actually an error in here. This will be effective September twenty-ninth. He'll be done that Friday. So, just need you to accept his resignation, and then we'll have to authorize city staff to start the hiring process. We have already started taking applications. We have posted for the job just due to the nature of the job and that we wanna get it filled as quickly as possible.
What if we say no?
Can we all just say no?
I have also tried that.
I believe I collect two salaries starting.
It's a good answer, though. So that means you'll be doing both jobs.
I don't have a problem with that.
Consult both personnel policies.
Wow, I wonder if that is covered in there. I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Michael Sommerfeld, effective September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
I will second.
Further discussion? There'll be like an exit interview performed, I assume? Okay.
I will say before we go any further on this, Michael, I appreciate everything that you've done for the city. You know, when we were interviewing for this sort of position at the time, we always knew you'd be a strong candidate, and um, obviously wanted you to be here a lot longer than you were. And uh, but you have definitely grown into this position, and um, of course, there's been some bumps and bruises, but you've handled it with, you know, complete professionalism, and um, you're definitely gonna be missed here.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yes, you will be missed before you start making Christie and I cry.
I, I do also wanna say, Michael, thank you for everything. I mean, just working with you as an election judge, the whole deal, your first time doing that, you did amazing. You know, you really helped out all of us that were there with you, so, you know, and just the little bit that I've known you, you've done a great, you've been a great asset to the city, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we really threw you to the wolves. Well, I don't know if we did, but you were thrown to the wolves, and uh, well, you're still kicking, so.
So far. There's still some days left.
Further discussion? Mr. Solars? Aye. Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote aye. Motion passes four zero.
Thank you.
And just a motion to authorize city staff to start the hiring and, and complete hiring process if, if we find a good candidate.
Have you received any applicants?
We have. Um, we've seen, we, we have received at least two that have prior city experience, and a handful from um, others that have financial backgrounds, so.
Nice.
From Indeed, or?
From Indeed.
Yes. Good call. I'll make a motion to uh, authorize city staff uh, to start the hiring process for a new clerk slash judge.
I'll second.
Further discussion?
How long do you have the application open for?
So it's technically open until um...
Filled.
Filled, yeah. Um, I'm gonna do my first review of applications next Tuesday on the nineteenth, and see if we can conduct some interviews. It's been open since that last week in August, when we posted, so.
Any other discussion? Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Quote for computer purchases with ARPA funds.
Mayor and council, um, I reached out to Palman, our IT provider, to get quotes on two new desktops for Jessica's computer and Christie's computer. I was doing an inventory as part of the CIP for, to match their proposed rotation of machines, and both Jessica and Christie's machines were not on the rotation because they are so old. Christie's machine does get the most burden put upon it, um, running all the utility billing. It, it, it's having a lot of issues lately, getting everything processed without crashing and, and the next. It was intended to replace two machines this year with the budget we had for computers. And then very early this year, we were hit with a necessary replacement of our backup server, which, again, that was what prompted the, getting the schedule from Palman for what, what equipment needs to be replaced when, and getting that as part of our CIP. So going forward, that's all figured in, but the missing piece is these two items did not get replaced because of that purchase. We do have adequate funds in ARPA, even if we consider what we have so far approved, and also the other items discussed. So we were, we initially received a balance for the ARPA funds of three hundred sixty-two thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars and change. So far, we have spent between eighty and eighty-one thousand, and further approved money that hasn't been spent yet on more of the camera and door security project in the amount of, uh, there's eighty-seven thousand dollars roughly unspent that has been approved so far in there. So the amount remaining that has not yet been spent, but, and excluding the amount that's already been approved of spending, is still nearly, it's one hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. The only things I could find so far that we've at least proposed, but not yet approved, or gotten specific bids for, are um, a, and a, a small generator at City Hall for in emergency operations if it were to take place there as the first stop before thing, unless there's something worse, then it would go to community center, um, that we had estimated at twenty thousand, and then an LED, LED city sign for messaging that was estimated at thirty thousand. So both those items were discussed in our very early CIP meeting, um, and we had made note to push those to ARPA funds. But there just has not yet been a resolution to, or a, or a motion um, to act on specific bids, so.
So there's a hundred ninety-five thousand left unspent or budgeted for, and eighty-seven thousand budgeted for currently with this purchase?
Uh, that, the hundred ninety-five thousand is after that eighty-seven thousand is spent, that is pending, as that project uh, will wind up next year. Then there are fifty thousand dollars worth of those other two items, the generator and the sign that I had mentioned. Uh, this would not be part of that. But e- even if we spent the extent of everything that's been uh, approved for the security project, and if we bought the generator and the sign and bought these two machines, we would still be looking at a hundred forty-one thousand and change remaining of ARPA funds that we have not yet started to dream of things to do with.
A couple of questions. Are you guys sold on actual desktops? Or would you like something more flexible?
The, my original intent was to swap out at least half of the machines in City Hall with laptops and docking stations, so they could be flexible. Currently, Jessica does have a laptop, I have a laptop, Christie's machine does not, Dan's machine does not. But the rotation that we were provided by Palman estimate, or had the replacement cycle for laptops at three years, and desktops at five years. So though the costs are about the same initially for what they're providing, slightly more for the laptops, the laptops need to be replaced, so they're ultimately two-fifths more expensive.
Okay, and then um, I would like to see a quote with a more update processor. The I-five processor is kinda old. We're, we're at I-nines now, so if we can get a quote with a better processor.
Something faster?
Yeah.
Something better?
At least, at least an I-seven. That's just my thought.
You can upgrade them.
Yeah.
For the best technology there is right now, it's federal government money.
Those are just my two thoughts.
Would you want to approve an up to that went higher that in your experience would extend to those faster machines? Or simply get a, a new quote when?
I would say probably in...
We'll be at a special meeting soon enough.
I'd probably say new quote.
You are the IT guy. Okay. Uh, point commission members for wastewater treatment facility commission to council members. Uh, so the thought was instead of doing two and an alternate right now, and amending the uh, mayoral appointments that we just um, appoint two people right now, and then when the new person comes on next month, we redo the mayoral appointments and include that on there. And as well as the uh, alter, alternate, so.
Any volunteers?
I'll volunteer.
Yeah, I've been to the meetings, or more than happy to do it.
You haven't been to the meetings? I, I, I don't care one way or the other. I'm fine still doing it. It doesn't matter to me. We could sucker the new person into it when they get here. I, I think it'll be easier just dealing with Waverly. We're gonna be dealing with probably some heavier stuff than we did with Buffalo. But, yeah, and they did accept the uh, thank you, but no thanks, pretty well. Other than they said, well, if you're ever interested again, let us know, and if you wanna see us incinerate our poop, you can come and do that next month.
Yeah, that's what they said to you.
Uh, 'cause they use the incinerator system, so. Whatever.
How long of a process do you think this is gonna be? Couple, I mean, well, for the commission itself, kind of unending. Yeah, um, I mean, new people have to be appointed, obviously, as council members come and go, but yeah, this is kind of a forever type thing until the wastewater plant is no longer, or until that next step comes, whatever that, whatever that looks like in twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be an ongoing thing every year, just like the rest of them, so.
I don't think in the beginning, there's gonna be a lot to iron out.
Yeah, a lot of it's gonna have to...
There'll be a lot of meetings initially.
You're going to a lot of meetings in the beginning?
Lot about percentages and a lot of...
And then over time, it'll cut back probably to just a handful of meetings a year, just to make sure everybody's on the same page and discuss rates and different things.
Once it's up and running.
Once it's up and running, correct, yep. Before then, it'll probably be fairly heavy with with meetings and discussions.
Again, I'd say I'd volunteer.
I'm happy to do it.
Okay, you two can do it. That's fine.
If you want to.
I, I'm fine. I don't mind later on, we can talk about al- alternates, but I'm, you, you guys can take care of it.
Okay, so Sam and David? Yeah?
Alright.
Got a motion for that?
Yeah, let's just do that, just, just for...
Okay, I'll, I'll motion to appoint uh, council member Sam Solars and council member David Paradise as commission members for the wastewater treatment facility commission.
I'll second.
Further discussion now, you're both not allowed to abstain.
I think it's fine, it's not a big deal.
I could get you guys some literature to read, if you really wanna, you know, like Sac State books and so on.
Yes.
Okay, I mean, it's really fun reading.
Anything and everything, Danny.
Yeah, it'll be entertaining. Uh, further discussion? All vote aye. Mr. Solars?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Motion passes four zero. Uh, Delano area senior center.
Mayor and council, included in the packet tonight was uh, this year's request from the city of Delano to contribute one thousand two hundred fifty dollars um, to help support the programs for seniors that the city of Delano provides. They, they claim that they serve around a hundred and four Montrose residents with their senior programming.
Yeah, meals on wheels included.
And they're delivering ten to fifteen meals every weekday.
This is something we've done every year for a while at least.
A while. Yeah, and when our senior card group disbanded, they're all out there now, so.
Yeah, that's where they all go, so.
That's where the cribbage games are.
I'll make a motion then to um, approve the one thousand two hundred fifty dollar donation to Delano Senior Center.
I'll second.
Further discussion? Mr. Paradise?
Aye.
Mizato?
Aye.
Mr. Solars?
Aye.
All vote aye. Motion passes four zero. So we reached out to, again, this year, Jess, Jessica was at least, by the Iris Foundation, just like uh, last year, asking us to um, name October um...
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, as uh, National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Um, so this is the proclamation, and it's the same as last year as well. So I'll read it. "Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated and many other nonprofit organizations work with thousands of parents all over the state of Minnesota and across the United States who have experienced the death of a child during pregnancy through early childhood. And whereas many of these parents live in, deliver in, have a child die in, or bury a child in our community, and whereas Infants Remembered in Silence, Inc., five oh one C three nonprofit organization, was founded..." was founded in nineteen eighty-seven, thirty-five years ago, which should be thirty-six years ago, uh, to offer support for parents whose child slash children died from miscarriage, ectopic pregnancy, molar pregnancy, stillbirth, neonatal death, birth defects, sudden unexplained death of a child, S U D C, sudden infant death syndrome, SIDS, illness, accident, and all other types of infants and early childhood death. And whereas bereaved parents around the world remember their children annually on October fifteenth with candle lighting at seven PM. Some will remember their children, their child slash children in their homes, while others will remember them in small gatherings around the state, across the nation, and around the world. And this would unify these parents in tribute to their children. And whereas in nineteen eighty-eight, President Ronald Reagan proclaimed October as National Pregnancy and Infant Loss Awareness Month. And whereas in honor of the thousands of children that die each year in Minnesota, Infants Remembered in Silence Incorporated respectfully requests that October fifteenth, twenty twenty-three be recognized as Pregnancy and Infant Loss Remembrance Day. Now therefore be it resolved by the city council of the city of Montrose, Minnesota. No open forum requests. Upcoming meetings, planning and zoning, Wednesday, September thirteenth was canceled. Uh, EDA, Tuesday, September nineteenth, twelve PM, Montrose City Hall. Special city council meeting on October second, five-thirty PM at Montrose City Hall. Um, park and rec, special meeting, September twelfth at six PM, and their regular meeting, Tuesday, October third at six PM at Montrose City Hall, and a council slash EDA workshop on Monday, October thirtieth, five PM. Uh, and that is to discuss and work on getting, um, a.
Commission.
It wasn't called a commission, it was, what was it called?
Children's First.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to think of what it was, um, another unit, um, anyway, a, a group of people.
A group of people.
Fifteen to twenty volunteers together to try to get a daycare into Montrose and this organization will help with that. So, um.
Can we change that one to five-thirty-two, please? I know. Good job, sorry.
Okay, that one's at five-thirty on October thirtieth.
Thank you.
Acknowledgements, um, especially since it's nine eleven, uh, I, I really wanna just acknowledge and thank the first responders. Um, I, it's, it's weird to think that something that happened in my lifetime is in the history books now and a large majority of people alive weren't alive for that. Um, but, I mean, without what they all did that day and what you guys all do on a daily basis as a first responder, there'd be a lot of people that aren't here still. So, um, there's not enough thanks and enough honking the horn at the firefighters on nine eleven every year that we could do to say thank you. So, and other first responders, not just firefighters, but. I also will acknowledge Michael again and say that it's sad to see you go and you'll be missed.
Thank you. Appreciate what you've all done for me.
Thank you, Michael.
And I, uh, I'll also acknowledge Nicole Andrioff for the time she put in on the city council, um, for the last, uh, just about three years on this term and, uh, term that she finished prior to that as well.
Um, I wanna thank the Celebrate Montrose group for bringing back the, um, town celebration and all the volunteers that came out and helped us, um, as well as the fire department for filling our dunk tank for us, um, Michael, of course. And then I think that's it.
Any other acknowledgements?
Uh, you guys have pretty much said them both.
I'll, I'll say one more. Um, every year this time, nine eleven, it's always kinda something that hits home, just being a part of it, being around it, being alive for it, still remembering where I was sitting in class when it happened. I'd like to remember one individual from that timeframe being, uh, he was known as the red bandana guy. Um, it's a, it's a tremendous story. And if you haven't heard it, seen it, there's many documentaries out there and stuff, but he was a gentleman in the tower. Um, he always wore a red bandana from early on when he was five years old. His grandfather, they were handing him a bandana to blow his nose and fell in love with the red bandana. So he was basically accounted for saving eighteen lives, um, found an, an exit door, got people down, ran back up, got more people down, um, sacrificed his life. Um, not until about three, four months after the accident, the terrorism, um, stories came out and his family got to understand that he saved lives because they all said, guy in the red bandana, guy in the red bandana. So just wanna be somebody that we look at, um, to, to, to emulate in life. Um, I think that this world is very divisive. This country's very divisive. I've said it last year too, but we need to, to look out after each other and, and continue to grow this community to be, you know, exactly what he emulated that day.
I just have one other acknowledgement, um, again, to Michael. Um, he did serve, uh, with the fire department while he was here with us. Um, his attendance will be greatly missed during the daytime, so wish you the best of luck. Thank you for the help and, uh, you were a great asset to the community and the city. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, motion passes four zero. We're adjourned.